Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. We will last with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which is ours. One nation under God, equal to all, and liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, who is our secretary, is actually joining us via phone. So he will not be secretary today. Our acting secretary is Ms. Albright. So Ms. Albright, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Bell? Here. Mrs. Godfrey? Here. Mrs. Leonie? Yes. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
You're up, Bucky.
Bucky.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. It's hard to hear, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Mrs. Thompson?
Okay. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper?
Hey, thank you, Madam President. Just a few items this evening. Just a reminder on the agenda, you'll find a recommendation from the administration with regard to mask wearing requisite. Just going to mirror what's been articulated about the D O H as of the 28th of June. So they will be asking for support action on that recommendation this evening. Also, of note is, last week, administration sent a survey to district stakeholders to gather input as requisite for the S R three funding. The S R three A R P funding for health and safety planning purposes for the 21, 22 school year. The information we collect will be used to work to establish that health and safety plan. As of note also, administration will be asking the board to take action. It's all I mean, on the current health and safety plans, to rescind those and replace it with the one that we'll be recommending as a result of that stakeholder input. The last item is just informational item for the board. Our administrative retreat for this 2021 summer will take place the first week of August, Monday through Thursday, where the district administrative team meets and does some professional continual learning. That concludes my report, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cooper. I would like to make one comment. The air conditioning in here, it turned off with an audible sigh at 6:00. And we did get it turned back on, but only like 30 minutes ago. And I'm sorry if it's uncomfortable in here. Hopefully it won't be soon. So procedures for public participation are... Right there. You come up to address the board, just write your name on the sheet. I'll make sure that your mic is turned on. Name and address to start. You have three minutes. And at the beginning of the meeting, it's only agenda items. And at the end of the meeting, it's on any items that you want to make comments on. So let me just say, I know we have announcements for agenda edits coming up, but I just want to say that two items are coming off the agenda. Before you make any comments, we are removing finance added consent A, so number 7A5, which is for repairs to the transition house driveway, and 6, which is for payroll services. We're removing both of those items from the agenda. I just wanted to say that before offering, opening the floor to public comment. So do we have any comments from the public on agenda items? Okay, I guess I didn't need to do that.
My name is Carrie Ms. Olson, at the 5:29 West Second Street, Port Row. I guess I'm just going to keep it short and sweet. Obviously, I said, I'm going to support staff. And as far as the support staff goes with our contract, we definitely appreciate remaining the employees. We appreciate, I said, that we're not being outsourced. But on the other side of that, I'm pretty sure most in this room are very concerned if we're going to honor the three-year contract. Because it does state in the contract that we can be outsourced at any time. So I guess, I don't know if anybody's willing to answer that, but we just wanted to find out if the contract is really on time, will be honored for three years. Go to it all.
You guys want to talk about that now? Or do you want to talk about it when the item comes up for vote? Go ahead.
Wasn't that always in the contract?
I don't want to say always, but it was in the previous one. It was in the previous one.
It was in the previous one. So it's not something new?
The intent is on the contract, isn't it?
Yes.
It's shown that most of the contracts are written on the present map. Intent and good faith is on the contract.
My thought as well. And we can talk about it more depth when we come up to that item on the vote if you'd like. So do we have any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to announcements. There is one agenda edit, other than the two I already mentioned, under personnel consent...
Added consent.
Right? Added consent, I'm sorry. Am I looking in the wrong place? I am. Personnel added consent. Under personnel added consent, 8A112, we added the retirement of Virginia Letcher, Level Two District Computer Tech in July. And then the two other things that I mentioned before, 7A, finance added consent, 5 and 6 are being removed from the agenda for now. And there will be an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss personnel. All right. Moving on to consent items, 3A1 through many, 1 through 21. Does anybody have a motion for those?
Motion.
Ms. Bell, do I have a second? Mr. Strobel. Is there anything on the list? Lot of it's just renewals of annual contracts for the year, starting July 1, or starting at the beginning of school. Does anybody have any questions for the board? For anyone on the board or for the administration before we vote on that group? Good hearing, none. If we could have a vote, Ms. Albright?
Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Godfrey? Yes. Mrs. Leonie? Yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
You, Bucky.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
We're not just giving Mr. Scott a hard time. It is very hard for him to hear when he's on the phone.
Oh, my gosh.
So I'm not just giving him a hard time.
But sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah. It's warranted. So moving on to budget consent items, how about if we vote on 4A1 through 5? Can I get a motion for those? Leaving out the millage. Mr. Strobel, do I have a second? Mr. Miller, this is the non contentious part of the budget consent. So is anybody having questions or concerns on that part before we vote on that? Can I get a vote on that, Ms. Albright?
Sure. Mrs. Godfrey? Yes. Mrs. Leonie? Yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
I think that's me, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Bell, yes.
I know you can hear me, because I'm loud as any bro.
No, then I'll just be there.
So, all right. So moving on to 4A6. Can we get a motion for it without rates in it? And then we can amend as we go? 4A6 without amounts in the millage for right now? And then we can start talking?
Okay.
Can I get a motion for that? Ms. Godfrey, can I get a second? Ms. Thompson? Okay. So I'm going to give our finance chair a second. I knew you wanted to just take a quick water break. To kind of pick up this conversation where we left it last week. If you wouldn't mind.
Okay, sure. We'd like to propose, as we discussed, the millage increase of .8, which would be 2.53% increase, which would leave us with a fund balance of 2.7%. Still would be a deficit of 1.168 million dollars, which we would have to take out fund balance to cover. But .8 is somewhere between 0 and the index, which we could go to is 1.2. It still leaves us exposed for future years. And we may have five, but it's still not fixed. But I think it's something that we could go with channel on.
Yeah, so if that's what we did, that would be, what, 32.384 mills?
32.384, sorry.
Instead of where we are right now, which is 31.584. It would only give us, what, a half a million dollars in fund balance? Is that correct? Or am I wrong on that? Instead of negative, negative at $400,000 of fund balance. Any thoughts before we, like...
I just have a question.
Yep.
Technically, we're still recovering from this pandemic, correct?
Correct.
And when I'm looking at the history here, we've never gone up to 20, from what I'm looking at.
We've never gone up to 20?
That's what it looks like.
We should go back to further history. We had double digits of history before I came in. What?
When I'm looking at the history? Am I correct on that?
Which are... I don't know.
In the middle of history.
For how long? Five years?
Ten, because he hasn't been tenured.
Yeah, if you go back to 2010, that would be correct.
So in a still pandemic, we want to raise the taxes higher than we've ever raised in the past. Am I correct in saying that's what we want to do?
Apparently, but how about change?
I just, I can't agree to that. I mean, we still have people suffering, and I just don't think that raising it, what we've ever had, is so great.
Yes, that's more than we were at, if we go back in time, if we're really...
I mean, in the last 10 years.
So we had periods on the way to the law, which is one of the reasons why we have
Anybody else have thoughts? Does anyone want to propose a millage to vote on?
I'd like to propose a .8.
.8 increase, millage of 32.384. All right. Do I have a second? Did I even stop? Okay. Okay. Any more discussion before we vote?
Any question, you said that there's been that 10-year stay, a few years where there were zero increases, and schools have to absorb an increase of the largest portion of its budget, and that would be salary benefits. That's not to say anybody who was part of that salary benefit increase didn't deserve what they did, or understand. The fact is that we have an increasing budget every year, we can spend no money anywhere else from an increased by whatever these increases are. I feel that part of the answer to your question was, I've done enough path, is, when I'm trying to make up for it completely, we got a hidden way of the edge going, but we have a fine projection that shows us in a very bad situation in terms of our budget, which shows that we're not going to be able to do what we do. So an effort to try and get down that path, get a little way out of it, along with some of cost-saving things, as I believe the administration has done very well the last couple of years as well. Combination and constant together lends itself to ultimately establish that piece of path, is the way I understand.
Yeah, the way it is, I can't find it. We have a three-year projection, we've got a fund balance.
Right. So again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody has that document to look at. It's not too late, we're not getting, when we actually did raise some vote in the pandemic, and we still had increases, we still think. So it's more worth it.
Anyone else before we vote? Do we get a roll call vote? .8 increase millage for a millage of 32.384.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie? Yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Bell, yes.
And just for the folks assembled, you know, I don't take Mrs. Leonie's comments lightly. I understand that, you know, we are trying to balance what's going on in the community with what's going, what we're trying to recover in the schools, you know, while still, while still looking forward and not creating problems for, as many problems for future board members. Too many headaches for them to try to resolve in the future. You know, if we tax to the max according to what we've got here over the next five years, if nothing changes, we're still, you know, we still have no fund balance left. So, you know, some things have to change, and some things, you know, we are trying to look at how to best save money while not sacrificing our students and our employees. But, you know, I'm not, I understand Ms. Leonie's concern, and I appreciate her advocacy for her constituents. Okay, moving on to...
Number four, it says that the motion for 21, 22, most of the resolutions as presented, based on that tax rate, for the C V D amount, which is the dollar amount reduction, will be $244.19.
Okay.
And it says the value of that $244.19 would be $7,540.
Yeah, can you make sure?
The resolution will present that.
Will present it, okay. Thank you.
We'll designate that a line.
And that those numbers are intertwined with the millage we've prepared. Thank you.
I think that we've told them another decade ago.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, moving on to programs consent items, 5A1. Can I get a motion for that?
Sure.
Second. Okay. Ms. Bell, is that on her?
Yes.
Yeah, and Mr. Miller. It would be nice when we don't have to wear masks on if we spoke. Sorry about that. But do we have any questions for Mr. Hurley or Dr. Cooper on Taiwan School Plan before we vote on it? Okay, seeing none, can we get a vote?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes. Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Godfrey? Yes. Mrs. Leonie?
All right, moving on to personnel consent items, 6A1 through, I guess, 1 through 2. Yes, it is. Inclusive. Can I have a motion for that? Ms. Leonie, can I get a second? Mr. Strobel, would you please give a second? And any comments, concerns, questions before we vote? Okay. Can I get a vote, Ms. Albright?
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott?
Is that me?
Yeah, you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes. Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Godfrey? Yes. Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
And I did want to, I said something last meeting again, but Ms. Hell, Ms. Nefok, Mr. Sherman, and Ms. Relling are all retiring, and we wish them well. And Ms. Nefok and Mr. Sherman, it means my children had them, and I said that last meeting, and they were wonderful. They are still wonderful. And, but, we're going to miss all four of them.
I actually asked if we could all cancel.
Oh, is that what your daughter said?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I wish all four of them well. And, okay, so moving on to finance added consent.
Are we now doing, so are we done?
What did I, did I miss? It's one, two, oh, three was, okay. No, you're not wrong. 6A3, it's indented incorrectly. 6A3, can I get a motion? I apologize, I missed it. Can I get a motion for the appointments? And can I get a second? And comments, questions, concerns, can we get a vote?
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes. Mrs. Bell? Yes. Mrs. Godfrey? Yes. Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
That's you?
Yes. Yes.
Are we good?
7A.
What?
We're on to 7A.
Yep. Okay. I was trying to figure out where I am, because I, obviously, not on, not on the same page as everybody else. 7A, 1 through 4. Can I get a motion for those?
Should move.
Can I get a second? We have donation, and the 3 and 4, I believe, were presented in the last Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting. And there's a renewal agreement. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns for the administration on those four items? If not, can I get a vote?
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes. Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
And, so personnel added consent is 8A1 through, 1 through 6? Is that correct? 1 through 6, can I get a motion for those?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Okay, any discussion before we vote? More comments, concerns? Okay. Can we get a vote?
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes. Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Bucky?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
90, yes.
Okay. And just as a comment, that does include the contractual agreement with the support staff. And I just wanted to say, I'm glad that we could get to this point where we were voting on that. As we've mentioned before, you know, it is always our intention to honor contracts, you know, from start to finish. I'll just leave it at that.
I'm sorry, I might mentally do this all for a second.
No, it's okay.
7A5, the motion for the driveway asshole re-keeping?
Yeah, it got removed.
By move?
Yeah. There's a just... And it was just removed because we still needed another, we...
Estuary?
Yeah. And we just, we're just not, we're not ready to call the number on that. Yeah.
I didn't understand why it's...
Yeah. No, that's okay. All right, moving on to program added consent, 9A1 through 2. Can I get a motion for that? Mr. Strobel and Ms. Leonie. I'm sure nobody has any questions or comments about the Mala U N going to Penn State. Anybody want to talk about masks? No. I said that pretty definitively. All right. Can we get a vote on those two items?
Yes. Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Where can we start calling Thompson?
What's that?
So where can we start calling Thompson? Yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Wouldn't you know, it's not going to be the same thing about that.
One thing I do want to stress, and we will stress this to, with, in our, in our conversations and, um, emails and such to parents, um, you know, we are still requiring face coverings on transportation, so any student that's taking part in our Summer Connections Program, we are providing transportation for that. They're still going to have to wear a mask on the, on the bus. It's not, um, it is, it is what it is. It's not 100% our rules, but, but that will be required if you're on a, if you're, if you're on a, a school bus or, um, or in a school van. Until, we don't know when, we don't know when.
Till they lift it.
So, um, but any student that's, um, that's going to be coming to school for any summer event or classes, you know, we'll reach out to them and make sure that they understand that.
These mandates from the state, just to understand where they come from.
The, the one on the public transportation, it's a CDC or under that section of the Public Health Service Code?
Same here.
So that's the feds, that's the feds, not the state, but, yeah.
I just want to remember.
Yeah. So many, so many edicts from so many places, it's hard to keep track of that. Um, so moving on to old business, um, 10A1. I'll tell you a motion. I forgot my line.
Alex, next.
Ms. Bell, Ms. Leoni? Okay. Can I get, um, if, if there's any questions about the minutes from last meeting? If there isn't, okay, I'm going to get a vote, Ms. Albright?
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey, yes. Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Bucky.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Okay, um, I have nothing for new business. Anybody else have something for new business? Okay, moving on to presentations by the public on issues. Do we have any presentations in the public? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, okay. I tried to give as long a pause as possible.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to mention this or not, but.
No, if it's, um, can you lift your mic up, the mic up a little? Go ahead.
I'm Robert Swalfer, I'm a resident of 566 Berkeley. I had a comment on the manner in which the support staff outsourcing was wealthy detention. And that was by, you know, the agency of power of protection of the service in the middle. Sorry, can I bring the microphone a little bit, I apologize.
And you can, go ahead, go ahead and remove it, it's fine.
As I was saying, um, the, the manner of which the support staff, the rest of the students in the party community was notified that these people have a very large impact on how the school is operated, were notifying the, you know, the discipline members that they're not supposed to be outsourcing. I think something of that nature really should be brought to attention on a large impact and appropriately given to services companies. So, I just, I really felt strongly that that sort of arrangement is a little sketchy. As a parent, that's better than, you know, think that it uses, that was a transparency. Perhaps in an industry where the contract to, um, about the notification is just a 13 days, five years, to, um, permit, you know, the process of time to comment, to represent, to give your attention, and, um, you know, isn't it, you know, why you're community, and what your sense of, and what your sense of. So we don't have a, a last second, you know, round, and come in here. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Mr. Miller, do I have a second? Ms. Albright, we are adjourned, thank you.